Good evening. I would like to call to order the September 20th, 2023 regular school committee meeting at 5:30 PM. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to convene an executive session, a non-public session, to discuss the approval of the August 16th, 2023 executive session minutes and collective bargaining pertaining to the TTA teachers. The school committee will reconvene in open session after executive session.
Make the motion, please.
A second. Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Russo and a second by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. And Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And that's unanimous vote. We will reconvene for our 6:00 PM regular school committee meeting in LG One. Thank you.
Welcome back. We reconvene our September 20th, 2023 Regular School Committee meeting at 6:05 PM. If everybody could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and welcome back, Rania.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. We have our just normal daily, weekly, monthly announcement here. The September 20th, 2023 Regular School Committee meeting will be televised and recorded and may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22 and Verizon Channel 34 on youtube.com/tuxburytv. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask anybody who's recording tonight's meeting to please identify themselves. Seeing nobody, tonight we don't have any recognitions. And, Rania, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone has had a lovely summer break. And today I'm really excited to be back and giving my first student report of the year. So to commence, I have some sports updates. Fall sports are officially in full swing and captains' practices and preseason training has ended. Normal practices have been going on since the beginning of the school year. The fall sports offered at TMHS include football, soccer, swim and dive, cheerleading, field hockey, volleyball, cross-country, and golf. So far, the varsity football team has gone 3-0, winning their last two games against Danvers and Haverhill. The varsity volleyball team was off to a rocky start but is making a comeback as they won their last game against Drakeett and are playing Louisville tonight. The Tuxbury-Methuen Swim and Dive Team has won two games against Haverhill and Drakeett and tied one against Chelmsford so far. Additionally, we have a meet tomorrow in Lawrence against Central Catholic. The varsity boys soccer team is undefeated and the girls and boys cross-country team are holding their own as well. They also have a meet tonight, so good luck to them. Next, I have some club updates for us. So International Club has had two meetings so far and they're beginning to prepare for a car wash that they'll be having in order to raise money for Doctors Without Borders this Saturday, which will be aiding Morocco and other places in need. The Debate Club, which is a new club led by Mr. Malloy, has also begun. And Student Council, Interact Club, Book Club, and Anime Club have also had their first meetings. DECA has had two meetings already and they're preparing for the fashion show, which will raise money for the Megan McCarthy Research Fund and just provide to the cancer research. The TMHS Theater Company has held auditions for their fall show, which will be High School Musical on September 7th. And last but not least, I'd like to end with just some miscellaneous things that are currently happening or have happened at TMHS. Freshman class elections were held last week and the winners were announced publicly via the loudspeakers. Picture Day was held on September 7th and retakes along with makeups were held today. Meetings for the school-wide trips to Puerto Rico, Canada, and the National Parks trip were held on September 12th. And finally, AP teachers are striving to have all students who will be taking their AP exam at the end of the month to sign up for the exam by the end of this month or the commencement of next month. So that's really all I have for today because there's not much going on so far. But thank you.
Thank you, Rania. Any questions for Rania?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks again. Okay, our next matter of business is our Citizens Forum. Not seeing a tremendous amount of people here today. I would welcome the first person up that has anything to share with us tonight.
I have some handouts for the three. And I'd also want to present for our court, what we're going to do.
I don't think we have the screen set up or prepared for that during Citizens Forum.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that, that's correct, Jason? That's not?
Thank you. Thank you. We can share.
No worries.
Okay. And just for Mrs. Johnson, if you don't mind just identifying your name and address for her.
I can't hear you.
If you could identify just your name and address for Mrs. Johnson.
My name is David Chu. I live 308 North Blue Brick Road in town. So I noticed with great fanfare that we've announced the free school breakfast and lunch program. I think that's terrific. So that first page shows you just the food and nutrition services homepage, which all parents who are interested can go to the log. The next page is a, shows a highlight, breakfast highlight for the Center Elementary School. I consider these highlights because there's additional menu items that are not shown when you go to this page right off the bat. Next page, I think the food and nutrition team ought to be commended for the amount of detailed data that they provide for, for parents and others. By clicking on any of these menu items, it'll bring up the full nutrition label. And I think that's terrific. And if, if interested parties want to see all the nutritional information for all the offerings for that day, click on that, that magnifying glass with the plus sign. Okay. From the USDA, which is actually running these programs, they distribute the money downstream. They proclaim that children and adolescents who eat a protein-rich breakfast report lower hunger for up to four hours. So this is, this is a key item that I want you to keep in mind. And this is very important. So next page is kind of complex. I need to take a moment to explain what's going on here. So the title is, "Over 60% of breakfast calories are from carbohydrates and only about 10% from protein." So that graph that you see there, what I've done was, is I've taken a week's worth of breakfast for the Center Elementary School, middle school, and high school, and I've looked at all that nutrition label, created a spreadsheet to calculate the macronutrients, carbohydrates, fat, and protein. And as a result of that, for this week here that we're sitting in, we're seeing a lot of carbohydrates, a little bit of protein, and a medium amount of fat. So that brings up the question, what are we doing, what is this program doing in terms of requiring a protein-rich breakfast? We take a look at just sugar, next page, page six. We take a look at the sugar content for breakfast. And the columns are CE means Center Elementary, MS means Win Middle School, and on the right bar, that's the high school. So taking a look at the sugar as percentage of the week of breakfast calories, you see that for, for the Center Elementary School, over 35% of the calories are from sugar. Next page, page seven. So one thing I've noticed on those, on the menu items we see on the website, there were, there are things that I personally am unfamiliar with. There's these ultra-processed packaged, prepackaged foods that are available to the students. So what I've done here is I'm comparing the sugar content of these prepackaged foods with, with a product that we all know and universally kind of claimed as being bad for, for us in general. So a can of Coca-Cola is about 340 grams per serving and has 39 grams of sugar. So you take this ratio of sugar serving and you get a, you get a unitless number. Okay. So this thing called Breakfast Breaks, which is a bowl pack of multigrain Cheerios, a package of animal crackers, and by the way, we're feeding this to high school students as well, animal crackers, and a four-ounce container of juice, of apple juice, which the USDA says is suitable, fits the requirement for a unit of fruit. Unfortunately, apple juice is as far away as you can get from an actual apple. Okay. So you run the numbers and that breakfast break has about 1.3 times as much, as 30% more sugar in a serving than Coca-Cola. Next row down, there's something that sounds absolutely delicious, buttery maple snack and waffles. I'd like to try that myself. But when you run the numbers, it has two and a half times the amount of sugar per serving as a can of Coke. And finally, we, we end with this thing called a benefit bar, two and a half ounces of this, of this bar, and it's got nearly three times the rate of sugar per serving than, than a can of Coke. So next slide is, the question is, what's the big deal, Dave? Why, why are you bringing this up to us? Well, if you go to the Food, Service, Nutrition page and then go to Nutrition Education, then there's another menu picked for Nutrition at Home. Right at the top, at the Nutrition of Home, is this warning for parents. And I'm going to read this out loud. "This generation of young people is the first that is forecast to have a shorter life expectancy than its parents. One in three or four children born in the year 2000 will develop diabetes at some point in their lifetime. The prevalence of overweight kids among 6- to 11-year-olds has doubled in the past 20 years and tripled for teens." So from the CDC themselves, this is a very long-term graph of the percentage of populace in the United States with diabetes, as well as the, as the number. So this is a staggering situation that we're, we're facing. Page 10, Childhood Obesity.
Mr. Chu, I'm going to give you just a little bit of a warning.
A couple slides ago is, is shown here in a graph, again from the CDC, another staggering set of information. So what, why go to page 11? So what do I believe is going on here? Well, when you feed people, children especially, large amounts of carbohydrates, which are simply, which are complex sugars, the body releases insulin. Insulin drives that glucose, tries to clear that glucose from the blood into, into the body. If there's so much glucose to, to deal with, we have a glucose crash that occurs. And that causes downstream problems with, with, it enables hunger again. Insulin as, as a hormone blocks the oxidation of your, of your stored body fat and stimulates fat storage. So my last slide, page 12, over time, could be years, most likely decades, as we feed our, overfeed ourselves in carbohydrates that drive blood sugar rise, that drive more insulin from your pancreas, that now prevents your body from oxidizing your own body fat and drives hunger, you get this awful cycle that we're in. And this is something I think parents who are, I know they're busy, just try to have a little bit of an understanding of how, how the human body works from a metabolic standpoint and what goes on here in school. This is not a condemnation of the Food Services Program. We're doing only what the USDA requires us to do. But I think we, as a community, probably can do better. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chu.
If there's time for questions, I'll, I'll entertain.
Thank you very much.
But otherwise, I'll yield the floor.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the, we don't comment back on Citizens Forum, but if you, I do have your email contact. And if anybody on the committee would like it, I'm happy to share it. And I appreciate you coming in tonight.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else looking to speak tonight? Okay. Thank you very much. And moving on from that, we have the approval of minutes with Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the August 16th, 2023 School Committee and Administrative Workshop Minutes.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And I make a motion to approve the August 16th, 2023 Regular Meeting Minutes.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Anderson, second by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith on both. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And both motions pass unanimously. And then our submission and payment to bills.
Sure. I make a motion to approve the payroll period ending August 17th, 2023 in the amount of $1,418,237.82.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion by Mrs. Anderson and second by Mr. Russo to approve and certify the payroll period ending August 17th, 2023 in a total amount of $1,418,237.82. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well for unanimous vote on August 17th.
I make a motion to approve the payroll period ending August 31st, 2023 in the amount of $1,292,613.57.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Anderson, a second by Mr. Russo to approve and certify the payroll period ending August 31st in the total amount of $1,292,613.57. Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well for unanimous vote on? And the chair votes aye as well, for unanimous vote on the payroll August 31.
And lastly, I make a motion to approve the payroll period ending September 14, 2023, in the amount of $1,560,427.71.
I'll second that.
Okay. That's a third motion by Mrs. Anderson with a second by Mr. Russo, to approve and certify the payroll period ending September 14, 2023, in a total amount of $1,560,427.71. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well, for unanimous vote for the September 14 payroll period. And then that would bring us to Mrs. Terry O'Regan for superintendent update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, obviously, a lot has occurred since our last meeting in August, but I do want to let the community know, we've now published our full district goals and school goals on the district website that we presented to you back at our August committee meeting and workshop. Additionally, parents can see our published Vision of a Learner district-created document on our website as well. You'll see that we've updated our district strategy and theory of action to match our goals and match that vision for all learners in all grade levels. And your consent agenda, I've given you a couple of examples of ways in which we're already putting into place some of those goals. For example, that TMHS improved criminal justice pathway, where learning is relevant and connects to our career pathway goals, that you'll see that document, as well as a document that Desi put out after our meeting in August that really highlights, it's as if they were whispering in our ear, because you'll see that the focus is clear in their vision to ensure that all students are known and valued, that learning experiences are relevant, real-world, and interactive, and that individualized supports allow all students to excel. If you remember, at our goals, strong instructional supports, hands-on learning, career pathways. So this document's really wonderfully aligned with what we're doing, which makes us, you know, tells us that we're moving in the right direction for our students too, in, not only in Tewksbury, but in the state of Massachusetts. Then, in August, the 28th, Monday, we had our amazing opening day with all of our staff. We did things a little bit different this year with a one-hour opening from the superintendent. It was quite entertaining. I know you attended, Ms. Carabedian, but, and then the principals likewise had two hours with their staff directly after the superintendent opening to build their own culture for the new school year and then do a deeper dive into their school goals. As I presented the district goals, the schools, as I said, did a deeper dive for what that meant for their schools. The best part of back to school is obviously on Wednesday, on August 30th, when our students arrived. That's when the life is brought back into the building. It was great to see all of the smiling faces. They truly are the gifts that make our work all worthwhile. And as promised, you can see some of those amazing highlights of the first few weeks of school as our new official, Tewksbury Public Schools Facebook page is now up. And there are many pictures and images of, you know, students coming back, things happening in classrooms. Folks can find that official link to our Facebook page on our home district page. We're having a little technical difficulty, but I promise if you scroll, you'll find that Facebook link. Again, it's a bird's eye view to the great things happening at our schools and our improved communications with the district. An add-on to Rania, our student update, I want to remind parents to keep up with academics and club offerings. Parents are also reminded to call their child's school for assistance if needed with logging into Aspen or Community Pass. The Community Pass application is where all students sign up and pay for the fees for whether it's academic testing, whether it's, you know, a club or athletics. So if parents need help with that, please contact their school and then check the district and school newsletters as they'll continue to remind and assist parents with those, with those needs. Let's see, the annual VFW Patriots Pen document will be shared with families tomorrow. The Patriots Pen is open to students in grades six, seven, and eight. And this year, the Patriots Pen theme is how are you inspired by America? Wonderful theme. And then the Voice of Democracy contest will open as well. And the Voice of Democracy is open to students in grades nine through 12. And this year's Voice of Democracy theme is what are the greatest attributes of our democracy? So some nice themes, and we'll get those out to families and students. With that, Madam Chair, I hope you can indulge me. I'd like to just read a letter or a message to our community as we begin the school year. First of all, I want to begin by just letting our community know how deeply appreciative we are of this community's support in providing us with the amazing schools and school resources that we have. But we're also here tonight asking for the community's help. Now that schools back in session, we are seeing a lot of foot traffic on the school campus during the school day. We realize that over the summer and in the early evening hours, many community members got in the habit of walking their dogs or taking, you know, leisurely strolls in a traffic-free environment on our campuses, or even using our ball fields or playground equipment with their younger children. And why not, right? These are wonderful public properties that the community has invested in, and we realize that. But tonight, I'm asking everyone to please be reminded that the school grounds are also an extension of the school building, and many student classes, lunch, and recess times are outside. All of our staff, as people know, are wearing these badges to quickly identify adults that should be on campus or in schools with our children. When someone comes to the school for school business, their ID is scanned and they are required to wear a badge to be easily identified. When our teachers or admin, administrators see adults walking by a classroom window or on the sidewalk near playgrounds where our students are playing, or even on the PE tennis courts or turf with PE classes on it, their protective natures take over. It really makes us feel vulnerable in providing the safest learning environment for our learners and staff, which I know is this community's highest priority as well, and they expect that for us, from us. So that is why we're just reminding the community, now that school's back in session, to please refrain from coming on school campuses during the school hours and extended care hours, unless, of course, you have school business to attend to. I would be remiss in not recognizing that our signage is not always clear for everyone, especially on our newest campus, the Center Elementary School, and we're working on that. There is proper signage at our other schools, reminding the public of this need to maintain the safest environment during school time for all. So I hope this message that I'm sharing comes across the right way. And I certainly invite community members or folks to call my office or building principals if they have questions. And in closing, just really, truly thank everyone for their help and adherence to this request so that we can ensure the safest school environment for all. So thank you. And with that, Madam Chair, that concludes my updates.
Thank you. Any questions, comments on superintendent update?
None. No, thank you very much.
No. I just want to say thank you for putting that message out. I think, you know, safety and security is pretty important right now. So I do appreciate that. I know it's hard for people because they are beautiful campuses, but, you know, hopefully they can be utilized outside of the school day. So thank you. And moving on to Mrs. McDermott, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
So our opening day PD went well this year. It was, as Superintendent Regan mentioned, it was certainly a different start to the year in that we took a more, kind of a more differentiated approach, which means everyone on that day didn't necessarily get exactly the same thing, but hopefully a little more of what they needed. By that, I mean the K6 ELA teachers took part in a full-day training for the new EL program. While the preschool teachers worked in their new Frog Street program, the PE health teachers and other unified arts teachers worked on their related standards. We also welcomed Alex Hirschberg back to support us in our new student study team structure. And we had a really outstanding keynote speaker, Aaron Polansky. He gave an inspirational presentation on transforming school culture, and the feedback on that was overwhelmingly positive. Additionally, we welcomed Kell Burke back last week. He met with all of the building principals and the PLC leaders to help teachers sort of narrow the focus of this year's work and to help frame this year's work around observable impact as it relates to our new Vision of a Learner attribute. So that's, that's super exciting, and we're looking forward to continue to work with him throughout the year. Our two-day new teacher induction program also went really well. The feedback, again, was, was very positive. We had about 18 teachers this year, so probably about half of what we had last year, but a really nice-sized group. Again, I want to thank Principal Terry Garrish, Karen Hodgson, Kathy Henry, and Kathy Carlton for all of their hard work and dedication to make this program so extra special, along with all of the teachers who volunteer to be mentors. Our mentor program is incredibly important to the success of the new teachers, and we're so appreciative of the investment and the dedication of our mentors. Without them, it just simply wouldn't be possible. One of the things that was a little bit different this year in the program is that we included our literacy, math, and technology coaches on that, on that first induction. And they were brought in to provide some extra support, answer any questions, which was, it was a really nice addition. And this way, right out of the gate, the teachers can see all of the support here in Tewksbury for them, and hopefully will feel more comfortable accessing that throughout, throughout their time here. And of course, the bus tour of Tewksbury is always a highlight and was again this year, led by two amazing TMHS student tour guides. And I remember Cullen Mangan from last year, he did it again this year, and Mason Veets, and they did a fantastic job. And as in years past, the tour ended at Meadowlands Ice Cream, and a huge thank you to Meadowlands for providing all the ice cream to our new TPS teachers. Overall, it was just a really warm welcome to Tewksbury. It's something that I think Superintendent Regan and I are hearing over and over again as we're meeting with, with new teachers, is just how welcome they feel. And this is such a nice, warm introduction. And for people to be taking the time to say that, I think it, and I know personally, I felt the same way coming in, so it's something I'm really proud of and happy to continue to, to support here in Tewksbury. We also had a lot of summer curriculum work. We had about 75 teachers contribute to about 1,000 hours of summer curriculum work. There would have been even more, quite honestly. It's just that we put more of a financial cap on it this year because we're, you know, looking closely at the budget. So this curriculum work included unit and lesson revisions across all content areas, further developing the dual enrollment courses at the high school, further developing our K4 standards-based report cards, and our MTSS playbook and our new SST structure. It was a very, very busy summer. So appreciative of the hard work our teachers put in this summer. Again, that work couldn't happen without them, and it really does help to, to further us along. Our DIBELS universal screening is underway. As a reminder, the DIBELS stands for Dynamic Indicators for Basic Early Literacy Skills. It's a very common universal screener. It's also a Desi-approved dyslexia screener tool. It's made up of different one-minute subtests, depending upon the grade level. They're individually administered to students by a teacher. We administer them three times a year, fall, winter, and spring, and progress monitor students who are not at benchmark throughout the year to just to measure and to design, to measure their growth and to design targeted interventions. Last year, we administered the DIBELS in grades K to four, and if you remember, that was, was K to three. We brought it up to K four. This year, I'm thrilled that we are taking it all the way to grade eight. We really feel like we want to monitor student progress more closely all the way, all the way through. So that's definitely a new venture for the Ryan School and the Wind School, and I want to thank everybody for being so flexible and welcoming and really, that means that the teachers at the elementary level, you might remember that I mentioned, we did that SWAT team approach last year where we went in and the literacy coaches and the reading specialists went in and administered the DIBELS for the students. This year, the classroom teachers at elementary level are doing that, and we've moved the SWAT team to the Ryan and the Wind while, so that we can support them in getting this off the ground. So it's been, it's been a great start. Also, our new ELA program, EL Education, is in full swing in grades K to six. Also, very, very positive feedback on, on that start. We've developed a really solid professional development plan to support teachers throughout the school year as they navigate through the program. I really believe that that's, that's key to implementing a new program. And we did that throughout the pilot and found it to be really successful. There's nothing worse than having curriculum arrive and not really having that support throughout the year to unpack it and to troubleshoot. And so our literacy coaches are involved in that as well. And luckily, we had so many teachers that piloted, so they're really able to act as support, supportive leaders on their teams as well. Sorry, it's kind of a lot. Standards-based report cards, whereas we're continuing to move forward with that rollout again, I'm super excited about that. I'm hoping that the community is going to be as excited, although I'm expecting that they're not, just because it's a big change. So I'm very prepared and really welcome any families who are, do have concerns to come to our, we are going to have a information night on Thursday, October 26, at 6:30 at Center Elementary School. And if parents can't make that or just have other concerns and want to meet, I am happy to meet with anybody who wants to learn a little bit more about that. Just reach out to me. And we're putting information in the district newsletter, and I'm including my email, so if anybody wants to, to chat. I think sometimes some of the concern comes from just the fear of the unknown, so I'm happy to help with that. Our literacy and STEM directors and I have been visiting schools during faculty meetings and PLC meetings. While this is going to be a shift for the community, it's also a shift for our teachers. So our teachers are really embracing this. In fact, they were, they asked for it. You know that many of them participated in the creation of this. It was a real group effort. So as I said, we're planning for that October 26 meeting for parents, but we also are planning for more professional development on October 18 for teachers. We also, you have new register periods in your packet. And we talked about this last year. So what we're doing with the standards-based report cards is moving to three terms for the report cards for grades one through four. So they used to have four terms, used to be quarterly, now it will be in trimesters. Special education progress reports will follow that same trimester schedule. The kindergarten report card, there is no change. It is staying with the two semesters, just as it was before. And they actually already had a form of a standards-based report card. It's just been updated. And their special education progress reports will go out with their report card, but we're also adding an additional special education progress report because the first kindergarten report card comes out in like, like mid-February. And that just feels like a long time without a special education progress report in that first term. So we'll be adding that in, in that November timeframe. We're just solidifying that date with Special Education Department. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education released the 2023 MCAS results yesterday. Overall, we had a nice call with the commissioner, and overall, the, the impact across the state is relatively positive in that they are seeing an upward trajectory, some signs of recovery, meaning that students are accessing grade-level content and beyond, which is definitely encouraging. The math and ELA results showed a slight improvement from last year in grades three through eight in terms of the meeting or exceeding category, while the grade 10 remained about level, about the same from last year. State results in science showed a very, very slight dip. So I'm looking forward to sharing more detailed information regarding how students in Tewksbury did in November. We'll take, from now until then, we're taking a deep dive with the curriculum directors and the principals, our whole leadership team, looking at our results and digging into that. And I will have that presentation ready for you in November like I did last year. And this year, we will also be talking about accountability results, which you haven't heard since back in 2019. So that will be something else that, that we get to embrace with our, with our MCAS. We know that there's a lot of controversy around MCAS. We look at it as one piece of, of data and a whole host of, of a data portfolio that we keep on our students. So it's not the end-all, be-all, but it is something that we, we consider a piece, a piece of data that we want to consider. On a lighter note, we have our townwide PAC meeting coming up on October 16. You have in your packet the year-long fundraising plans for the Heath Brook School and some TMHS, I believe. We'll have more information for you from all of the schools at our next October meeting. And that concludes my rather long update. Apologies. Okay. Any questions or comments?
I, if you don't mind. No, I just wanted to say thank you. I actually was going to ask you about some of the standards-based stuff, but you literally answered every single question I had, so we are good. Thank you very much.
Mr. Parsons, anything?
Just impressed with what we're doing, and I fully support and appreciate these changes and things we're adding. It's great.
Me too. It's really exciting, and it's, it's exciting to be working with the teachers like this and the excitement. like this. And the excitement that is in the buildings has been really positive. So all good stuff. Mrs. Anderson?
Yeah, I'm really excited for the standards-based report cards, especially from the presentations that you provided. It looks like it's going to be great for our families and our community. Just a question, the informational night on the 26th, that's for all grades? It's really the same presentation for all grades?
Yep, K to 4.
Okay.
Yep. Mrs. B. Johnny Smith?
No questions right now. I'm looking forward to the MCAS results in November and some more on that.
Madam Chair, there are a lot of updates tonight, right? There will be a lot of updates in the September district newsletter, but so that parents who aren't watching will still hear and see these registry updates, MCAS, standards-based report cards. They'll get that information as well.
Oh, great. Okay. And we're really trying to make a concerted effort in the district newsletter to add just a lot of information. We're having departments really contribute to that newsletter, not only for parents, but also for staff, so that we're just kind of keeping everybody abreast. It's nice for high school teachers to be able to read that standards-based report cards are coming, and they can see that when they get the staff district newsletter. So that's, I think, I'm hoping that that's going to be a nice change. So we want to encourage everybody to read it. Will you all set, Mrs. Anderson?
So my only two questions. I'm nervous a little bit about kindergarten not having any sort of marking until February. So outside of that, you're saying that the progress reports will just be issued for students that are struggling?
Okay, so there's no change to kindergarten. Kindergarten's always been that way.
Okay.
That's
So it's always been February?
Always. Yeah.
Two, a semester one, and then a semester end of year.
Yeah. So that's, there's no change. What we added is we've aligned the progress reports for students on IEPs to the report card, as they should be, you know, if you're getting your report card, especially in a standards-based report card, because you're going to be looking at how your student is doing against the grade-level standards. So for some students who are on an IEP, that might not, they might not -- hopefully, you're going to be getting more data than you were because we're really outlining those standards, and you're going to see some where maybe instead of an overall kind of, you know, just a grade and reading, you're going to see deeper. But still, we know that in special education, we really want parents to be looking at how is my student progressing toward their own benchmarks and objectives, right? So it's important that those match. What we talked about as a committee is if you are on an IEP, we want parents to get just an update a little bit sooner. They're still going to have conferences in there, too. They have that conference time where -- so it's really not much of a change for kindergarten, except we're adding that special education progress report.
Okay. Okay, great. And then my other question is, when can families expect their students' MCAS results? Do you have any idea about that?
That's a good question. I don't know that yet.
The schedule for that and the date for that is part of that press release, but I can't recall right off the top of my head.
I have it right here.
You have the press release?
Yeah.
Just because I think as the district, you know, it comes up here in our meeting, and I think as, you know, we'll get further updates.
Yeah. It says that the MCAS scores will be available online, and it gives the link, but it doesn't say the date.
No. Well, if we can find that out before we publish the newsletter, we'll put that in as well with the press release.
Yeah, just so people have some expectation.
Yep.
The student report, yeah.
Whatever it is. Okay. Yeah, that's it. Thank you so much. A lot of work. And yeah, I think that first day, you know, it was a little awkward. I felt like a little bit at first online, but I'm really happy to hear that teachers were able to get kind of more of the professional development that they're looking for. So that's refreshing. So thank you.
Yeah.
All right. And Mr. Libby?
Good evening.
Update?
Good evening. Thank you. I just have a transportation update, since that's all we do in the business office these days. The, yeah, the major issue we're dealing with is the driver shortage. That's really the crux of the problem. The bus company's been providing us with two drivers from Connecticut that they're housing up here to help get us to even the 23 drivers that we have. We've had several candidates unsuccessfully attempt to test to become licensed in the past few weeks and months. Companies trying through recruiting bonuses. They're offering signing bonuses. They're offering perfect attendance bonuses for the drivers we have so that we don't have attendance issues. So they're taking action on their end as well. We've looked at rerouting as well as an option and going down, reducing the number of buses that we need. We have a plan in hand that reduces us to 23 buses, which is what we have for drivers right now. We're meeting with the bus company tomorrow. There's sort of pros and cons to whether we implement that plan now or wait for some more recruiting efforts. We have a couple imminent tests happening next week. So the negative side of another major change, it's, we're not entirely sure on the process now with the bus companies unionized. They go through a bid process now with their routes. There's a chance that a driver that got their route changed could then say, no, I don't like this route anymore. I'd like to take that route from that driver and then that driver, and it could bump down the road. We're not entirely clear on that right now because this is the first year the company's unionized. So it's a little different for us and for them from that perspective. So we're, like I said, we're meeting with them tomorrow to discuss how we want to proceed with the rerouting versus continued recruiting and what we're going to do going forward. We dealt with a lot of firsts this year. This is our first year, like I said, with the bus company being unionized, the drivers being unionized. The process for assigning and changing the routes was different and new for all of us. This is the first year. We actually had the startup with the MyView app, which had some difficulty at the beginning of the year. When we rolled it out last year, we were testing it sort of behind the scenes before we turned it on to the public. So we had a lot of the kinks kind of worked out before we flipped the switch to turn it on to everyone and didn't have that opportunity this year with the startup of the school year. Another first with the new route design for the K to 4 schools, where we were trying to separate the buses more than we had done in the past. So a few firsts that have given us some headaches out of the gate. Issues we've been dealing with and trying to improve upon, communication is a big one. We know that was not going well at the beginning. The bus company's hired an onsite general manager to -- so that they'll always have someone in the office at the beginning of the year. A lot of their staff was forced to jump behind the wheel if we had shortages in different areas, either vans or buses. Now we're guaranteed to always have someone in the office. They also gave us some other contact numbers at their other locations so that we gave those to school personnel and safety personnel as well, so that they'd be able to get a hold of somebody if they need to at the bus company. We were also given an app where we can listen to their radio transmissions, which has been a big help for us, particularly on the bad weather day when we had the storm kind of blow through right at dismissal time a couple Fridays ago. We were able to hear, you know, when a driver was telling us they were just stuck and couldn't move because there was a tree down and being able to send out messages through our one-call system and not have to wait for a call from them telling us the bus is late. And just being able to hear things firsthand through the radio app was great in a situation like that. We've also got logging credentials to the GPS system. Just got on there today so we can collect data on where the buses are, real time and after the fact. We can kind of see when they get into school zones, when they leave school zones, so we can start analyzing that data and see where we know we need to make some improvements. So everybody wants routine. Everybody wants consistency. We're trying to get there. That's part of the discussion at the meeting tomorrow, where we want to, you know, get these routes set and not have to make changes daily, changes weekly, changes when we have drivers out. So that's the discussion that we're going to have with them tomorrow. We're going to bring up possibly involving drivers and getting their ideas on ways that they think we could improve their runs. We do that in the summer. Now that we've run them for a couple weeks, probably a good time to bring them in again, get some feedback on how their route is running at this point in the year. The, our assistant business manager, Eileen Osborne, is meeting tomorrow with the CPAC. They have a transportation item on their agenda. So we'll get some feedback from them on the vans, how they're running from their perspective for both the out-of-district students and the in-district students. We have several companies that provide out-of-district transportation to us as well. So we'll get some feedback on how those arrangements are running. And the last thing from my update was the superintendent said I need to turn to the camera and say, drivers are needed. If anybody's out there that needs some work, it's a well-paying position, paid training, paid recruiting bonus and signing bonus, and we need help, and we'd love to have you aboard and get you behind the wheel. That is it for my update.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. Any questions, comments on the update from the business manager?
Yep, Mrs. B. Johnny Smith? So I have a couple. I will, one first. So you said you can listen in through the radio. Who's listening? Is that you? Is it central office? The principals?
No, just myself and the assistant business manager.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then transferring that information to the principals to?
Yeah, we let the schools know if it's something that, you know, the bus is running late, and we hear that right away, we can let the schools know. Or if it's a pickup run, if there's a delay, we can send home a one-call-now message.
Okay. And then, so my next, my next comment is really not a question, just kind of putting something out there that we talk about transportation towards the end of the school year, all throughout the summer, and we talk about how sensitive it is, how important it is, how much stress it brings families, commuters, everybody. It's something that I think is not even just important to the people who are taking the bus, though it's very important and very serious to make sure that their kids are getting to and from school safely. But it also impacts the entire community as a whole, scouts, whatnot. I'm just looking way ahead and thinking that perhaps there's a way to better roll out our transportation plan before a week, two weeks, three weeks before school, especially if we're within contract with the same company. This year, we changed. We were bringing in new drivers, whatever it might be. I just know that there were a lot of people who were very stressed out, will be the easy way to say that, about the process. And it's hard. I've seen the emails come back and forth. I've been impacted directly with my kids. I know it's hard. And it's, we're at the mercy of all the different things, but just wondering if we can look at it a little bit differently next time, in whatever way that might be. I don't have an answer, just a thing to kind of think about for the future.
Certainly, yeah.
Yeah. Like I said, I think everybody knows how hard it's been, for everyone, for the kids, for the teachers, for the drivers, for you all in the office.
It's been tough. It has.
Hard. So maybe as a team approach, we can look at that.
Yeah, no, we appreciate that. And we're not done. We're not done. And I do appreciate you recognizing just having that app for Dave and/or Eileen to listen, to know in the moment there's something saves minutes and multiple calls, which clog up the lines at the bus company because we can respond. And that was why we asked for it, because there were too many calls going through that weren't going through. And for whatever all those reasons, we're starting up at TTI. But it has been helpful and informative for us so we can respond quickly to whatever that need is.
Very eye-opening as well, like how much goes on out there that we never knew about. You know, the, someone's not at the bus stop, they circle back and check back in again. And then if no one's there, called school, kids going home daily, the students going home. Because, you know, the drivers aren't, they don't let elementary students off without someone at the bus stop. And it's, I don't think there's been a day that we haven't returned someone to the schools. So it's been a learning experience for us, too, just having the radio and the cooperation between the drivers, too. They're really good with each other, like, hey, you can't get over here, or I can help you out with those two stops. And they do a great job, too.
Thank you. Okay. Can you be on?
Parsons?
No, I just, I just want to sort of recognize that I know that this has not been easy. And I think, you know, it's easy to get sort of carried away with social media when you see things or you hear things. I think more than anything, I think people just want to be reassured. And I don't know what the right answer is. I don't. I don't know that any one of us
Drivers.
Drivers, well.
Drivers.
Sure, that is
Bus and van.
How did we get to that point, though? I think is the
We need drivers.
And, you know, and, Mr. Libby, I heard you say, I think if I got it right, you know, right now, out of 24 drivers that we are contracted to have, we have 21 plus two that are being housed up here. You know, I'm assuming that's in a temporary nature. And of course, you know, the colder weather is coming, you know, the inclement weathers or days are coming. And so it's just a matter of time before now you start running into sick days and people taking time off, maybe whatever, for various reasons. So, you know, that 21 plus two could very easily be 18 on a particular day, right? So it's, you know, what is the bus company's, you know, plans and sort of in those moments, in those situations where it might, they might not know till the night before. And then how do, and it sounds like you have a plan to notify, which is excellent. I just think more than anything, I think families just want to be reassured because, you know, their bus might be on time for the first three weeks of the school year, but then next week, maybe there's two days. And it's just, why then? Why now? And so, I don't know. I think people just want to be reassured more than anything.
Thank you. And Mr. Parsons?
Yeah, I'm just curious, not to put anything more on your plate, don't want to do that. Would the bus company have any kind of advice for families or the staff managing kids coming in and on a bus during the school dismissals? Just kind of anything that they could recommend to help them out that could be shared with families?
If reminding children to stay in their seats during the ride, I'm hearing a lot of stress level from the drivers with student, sort of student behavior. And just, it starts with, if you're in your seat, you can't get in too much trouble. The seat's usually taller than the little guy's. So that's a great start. The seat's usually taller than the little guy's, so that's a great start for kind of a well-behaved bus. That's the, we got some feedback today from the, one of the managers that they were requesting a few more monitors just for general student behavior. They having a hard time focusing on the road, it's frustrating, so I guess that might be the, the help we could use from, from folks at home.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Mrs. Anderson?
Yeah, I think just to go off what Mr. Russo said, I think the reassurance, but also that communication piece and you being able to hear on the radios and being able to communicate out with the, with the different apps is key. I think we're always going to have issues, we're always going to have bus drivers calling out, we're always going to have traffic, but as long as those parents are being communicated to, then they at least have a good reassurance that their child is on their way home and is going to, is going to get home.
Yeah.
And I also just want to thank you for making that swift decision the other day during that weather, because my kiddo was one that was held back, and I was very grateful that he was held back and kept at school until it was safe for him to get home.
Yeah, that was not good.
Yeah. I can imagine, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was even, we were, we had, we had a plan to walk them about 50 feet from the center school to the Ryan School, and even that was just.
There was such an enormous puddle, like a canoe, like you needed, you know, some kind of a raft to get across it, and you couldn't tell until they all started coming. And I was like, oh, no, backing up, like, it was just, but it was an adventure. Luckily, the kids were, were great, the teachers were great as they, as they sloshed through, but, yeah, it was challenging all across the state. I mean, everybody was talking about it, like, the timing of that storm just couldn't have been worse.
Yeah.
When you think that week, the biggest question was, should we close early or, you know, for heat? Then who would imagine, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Libby, a few things I have to say. First of all, I can't believe this is our first meeting since the start of school.
Yeah, came on with the bang.
It came on, yeah. So it feels like we've been back a lot longer, but I want to thank you for the collaboration because I, you reached out and invited the committee to be present in those first few days when you were really in crisis mode, and to have witnessed the bus company working with the district so closely, and to just see that 100%, I feel like the Tuxbury Transit is as committed to the students as the district is. So I think that that line get, it seems very blurred to me, and I like that because it feels like there really is a solid team approach to how some of these problems are being solved. I have to echo Mrs. Bejony Smith in that I think families are just maxed out with their level of stress when it comes to, comes to transportation. So anything for communication. You know, I know that the One Calls backup, I mean, that was just a one day, you've got text messaging that goes out. I think there's always that concern from people that maybe they missed something. So as they're standing, you know, with their smaller children and the bus maybe is a little bit late, maybe it hasn't gotten to you that a message needs to go out, something like that. I don't, I don't know what the answers are, again, the same as, as what my colleague's saying, but people just still, it's not, we're not there yet with the communication, and I, I don't know what the answer is. I don't know if a dashboard-style thing would work on the website where every single message that goes out just goes onto a dashboard. That way, people could reference it and say, "Did I miss something? Is, is there really a bus out? That's a, it might be a ton of work on your end, and maybe that's a ridiculous thing to suggest." I don't know what the answer is, but I think people, they're still really just wanting that communication. I think they understand that, what the problem is.
Right, that, you know, technology's not perfect, you know, and a machine's talking to a machine, sometimes it doesn't work.
Yeah.
And we get calls all the time, they just see the, we call our ID, and they call the central office, and Gail will come in, "Did you guys send a One Call Now message?" Yep.
Right, so, yeah, I mean, again, I, I don't want to micromanage, but I do think that I'm still hearing, you know, from just people I know in the community that they're just not quite feeling like they're getting the communication that they, they're looking for. On your end, you're probably maybe feeling like you're over-communicating, so I, so I don't know. But I think in this state, in this case, it would be, go as far as you can, and then always just pull back later on, hopefully when everything's back the way it needs to be. So, anyway, but again, thank you for all your work.
We have our new Facebook page, so maybe that's.
Yeah, it's a push out of information, and, I mean, it's, it's tough because, you know, we've all been down the My View app, and it's working well. However, when there's a bus change.
Correct.
These are where, you know, again, it doesn't always flow as smoothly, and Dave brought up Gail. We would definitely be remiss if we didn't recognize the calls that Gail has fielded, and we, we hear the parents concerned when it's going too long and they haven't heard, and Gail is, and we've heard people say, calm under fire, always kind, always respectful, always understanding what that emotion is on the other end, and that's the way we hope and expect all of our schools and our district offices running, and Gail, you know, is definitely doing that for families.
Yeah. So, so anyway, so those are really my only thoughts, but I do appreciate it very much. And also, I'd like to recognize, you didn't have this in your updates today, Mr. Libby, but all of the work that the crews did at the Heathbrook with that flood, that are still doing, the diligence that has been, you know, directed during some of these storms, not just to, you know, hold off that day of transportation, but you've, you've handled quite a few other things at the same time as you've been overseeing the transportation, so thank you.
Project is moving along, and we hope to have those areas waterproof, waterproofed, so we can proceed with the repairs.
Yeah, and one thing I did notice in the consent agenda was the number of students that were at the Heathbrook this summer, so I kind of glanced at that and thought, oh, wow, all of those students had to kind of go somewhere.
In a moment, and the timing was just, oof. Yes, but.
Yeah. So anyway, thank you very much, and there's a lot, this is our first month, but thank you for your attention. And consent agenda, is there anything else that you'd like to cover, or everything's in there? Okay, is there a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in our second.
Okay.
I'll second.
So a motion by Mr. Russo, second by Mr. Parsons, to accept the consent agenda as it's presented tonight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes unanimously. And then we have our reports. Elementary School Building Committee, did you want to give a final on that, Mr. Russo?
Yeah, I mean, I guess at this point, the committee has decided to take the steps to disband with the caveat that if anything outside of the realm of intentions that the committee had planned with wrapping up all the open items, the budget that would remain, et cetera, that that committee would reconvene, you know, if needed. You know, I know that the, that the different folks are still working through the punch list items, you know, but nothing, everything seemed on track based on the last update that was provided, and the final update that was provided.
Okay. So moving forward, are you comfortable if we take this off the agenda? If something comes up, just let us know, and we'll add it for the next or future. Okay. Tuxbury CPAC?
CPAC, go, go. You want to go?
Okay, sorry. CPAC will be having their first business meeting tomorrow. I'd also just like to publicly thank my fellow liaison, Mrs. Bejony Smith, and CPAC member Paige Ricardo for volunteering their time to do the enjoyable work of reviewing redactions for a public records request that was quite lengthy. It's just, I just wanted to name and bring notice to the collaboration there around protecting student safety and privacy.
Thank you. Anything to add, Mr. Bejony Smith?
Oh, no, not this time.
Okay. And Wellness Advisory Committee?
Yeah, so we had our first meeting a couple of weeks ago, of the new school year, anyway, and it was great in the sense that we had a full committee, sort of going back to long before my time on the committee, going back really before the pandemic, where we had a full group, just to name some names on the committee. Present during that meeting, Kelly Constantino was, was present, Maria Roggerio, who's our Prevention Program Manager, of course, Kayla and myself were there, Melissa Braga from the Board of Health, Victoria Cardero, our Assistant Principal at the Wynn, Julie Fabiano, Latia MHS Health MPE Educator, Kim Sarcioni, Ryan School Health Educator, Julie Fabiano, no, I already said her, Shannon Gillis, our Tuxbury Health Department Director, Paige Impink, resident in the town of Tuxbury, James Reiser, our SRO at Tuxbury High, and then Kim Toro as an eighth grade student at the Wynn. So fantastic to bring that committee together. We talked a lot about the goals of what the committee wants to accomplish over the next 12 months, or particularly during the school year. We are working to finalize the wellness policy to be presented to the policy committee of the school committee so that that can, can finally be put to bed. And then we really just talked about, you know, different things that we want to do over the course of the school year, you know, whether it's tied to different, you know, days of the, of the, or months of the year, whether it's Mental Health Month, Nutrition, Food Nutrition Month. I think, you know, some of the things that we heard tonight in our citizens forum, I think, you know, we would want to maybe potentially add to the agenda for next month as well, you know, and all good, all good things. So I think there's a lot to still come, but it's great to have a full committee back again.
I'll just add one more thing to that, is I think that we may still be looking for a parent, a parent of a student that would be interested in joining the committee, that's the only spot. I think that when you look at the pillars of a wellness committee, a well-rounded one, is that a parent, not employee.
And you know.
The missing link there.
So if an eighth grade student, is that the only student on the committee?
Yeah, that was what was brought forward, yeah. Yeah.
We hope that student will maintain membership and have a nice connected, you know, longevity with the goal setting and then following through once here.
Yeah.
Nice, okay. That sounds, I, I'm excited. That sounds really great.
Yeah.
I have no questions, if you have questions for?
And our next meeting is scheduled for two weeks from tonight, actually.
Okay. Any questions for Richard, Kayla? Okay, great. And Policy Subcommittee, we are meeting tomorrow morning at 8:30 in the morning. Pretty much you can follow along with the work that we're doing because we're bringing it to the meeting. The only thing worth mentioning is that we have a couple of policies that we've kind of put on the back burner, hoping to get some feedback from, from staff, teachers specifically, community members, students, because they're things that, you know, some of these policies are really going to have a bigger impact on the day-to-day, so just keep a tune out for that, you know, as that stuff comes out, we'll be discussing a little bit more about what that's going to look like in terms of how to, how to get information, but just, that's the Policy Subcommittee Outlook Update. Now, Mrs. Anderson, go over our list here.
So we have about a dozen policies that we're going to review tonight. The first couple are informational readings. The first one, FA, Facilities Development Goals, that is what we did to this one, is just revise the legal reference to reference the new Mass General Law. Any questions?
Okay. I'll move on, yeah.
Okay. The next policy is Policy HA, Negotiations Goals. We made just a couple of revisions to some language. We revised young people to say students, and then we also added the school committee or its representatives. Again, this is an informational reading, recommendation, recommendation to revise the policy.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Okay. The next policy is ECE, the Tuxbury Memorial High School Student Parking. Initially, this policy had a number of pieces in it that were also in the TMH Student Handbook, so what we did was we took those out and we just referenced the Student Handbook in the policy. This is a first reading and a recommendation to revise the policy.
Any questions on ECE?
No.
The next policy is IJNDD, formerly known as the Policy on Facebook and Social Networking Websites, and now revised to be known as the Policy on Social Media and Online Digital Communications. This will be a second and final reading. We've already had, this has already been presented twice before, so we are recommending to revise this policy.
Any questions on this? Because this would require a vote.
No.
Okay. And with that, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the changes made to IJNDD as presented in the packet, the final reading.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion by Mrs. Bejony Smith, a second by Mr. Russo. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that's a unanimous vote to update ECIJNDD, formerly Facebook and social websites, to now be social media and online digital communications, and that will be updated and put in our, updated in our packet.
Okay. The next policy revision is JIC, Student Discipline, so this was updated with input from our legal to reference the updated Massachusetts General Law around suspension. This was, this did go through an informational first reading, so this will be a second and final reading, and we are recommending to revise the policy.
Any comments?
I'll make a motion to approve JIC as presented on the suspension policy.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion by Mr. Russo, a second by Mr. Parsons, to approve JIC, which is now to be known as Student Discipline, formerly Suspension, with edits as noted in the packet. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries unanimously.
The next policy is FCB, Retirement of Facilities. This will be a first and final reading because we are recommending to adopt with no changes.
Ms. Gary, would it be, because all of these policies are in the same field, would it be easier to approve the slate?
I would entertain it as a slate, yes. So that would be FCB, FF, FFA, LA, and LB. If there's any topic, motion, concern, issue, we can discuss, otherwise I would entertain this as a slate.
I'll make that motion to approve the slate as presented on our agenda this evening.
I'll second that one.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Russo, a second by Mr. Parsons, to approve, to approve on first and final reading, to be recommended to approve with no changes, FCB, FF, FFA, LA, and LB. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries.
We're getting close. Yeah. The next policy is FI, Dedications. This we are recommending as a first and final, to rescind the policy.
And again, Ms. Gary, would it make sense to approve the slate? Because I think all these policies are in the same bucket.
So that would be FI, Dedications, LBCE, LBCR, all to be voted on for first and final reading with a recommendation to rescind.
I'll make that motion.
A second?
Okay, a motion by Mr. Russo, a second by Mr. Parsons, to rescind FI, LBCE, LBCR. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Okay, now we move on to our old business. I'm not quite sure who's presenting.
Assistant Superintendent will take this.
Yes, so you have the summer programming sheet in your packet. I also included it last time, but we didn't have the numbers then, so we just wanted to share it with you again so that you could see the, the actual enrollment numbers. As you, as I mentioned, last month, we had a robust summer program, amazed by, by what happens here in the summer. It's truly outstanding, and overall, you can see that we had some great attendance, and we were even able to offer the Celeration Academies again this year through that grant, so it was really wonderful. Superintendent Regan and I got to walk around a little bit and see some of the, after they transferred, I think they came from the Heathbrook, right, to the Ryan, and it was up and running at the Ryan, like, like it was always at the Ryan, you wouldn't have known, but the way that they, and we were able to come to the, what they call a carnival, and it was amazing to see the work that they accomplished there, so, great stuff.
Any questions or comments? I have one. Title I, Jump Start to First, Second, Third, Fourth Grade. What is that program exactly?
So it's a reading program that any student who qualifies for Title I can take part in, in that program, and they just work on keeping their skills sharp in the, in the summer. A lot of our reading teachers actually do it, our classroom teachers.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, wow.
It's something that we tend to write into the Title I grant as extended year programming.
I love it.
Super important because those students, when your reading skills are fragile like that, that kind of time in the summer, and it tend to be more reluctant readers anyway, so it's great to offer that and get kids to come and keep those skills sharp.
That's excellent. Okay. Anything else? All right, no. Thank you so much. It's a robust program, for sure.
It really is, yeah.
Okay. And now we move on to our new business.
Sure. And I'll pick up here, Madam Chair. What you have in front of you is a nice kind of proactive approach from our advisor to the DECA program, Mr. James Sullivan. What he's asking for here is your vote on a number of field trips, if you will. You know, an informational field trip, the actual competition, and then the field trips that happen or the conferences that happen for students that qualify into next year. So he's provided you with all the necessary information as he has it right now, and of course, we'll update you with final costs associated or, and the costs, I mean, the club and the members, they fundraise on their own, but also who the qualifying students will be. So you've had this in your packet, I'm sure you've looked at it. I don't know, Madam Chair, whether you want to take a vote on all four separate or as a slate, as I heard termed in the last vote.
So I guess I'll entertain any questions or comments, and I'm comfortable doing it as a slate unless others like to see it done differently.
I just have a question for clarification because it's financial impact.
Roll call.
Will that, does that matter if we take it as a slate? I don't know the answer to that.
I, I mean, I think it's, I think you can do them as a slate.
Okay.
But...
But still, roll call.
Yeah, but it's still a roll call.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, Madam Chair, but I just, would just like to advocate, I mean, as a DECA, former DECA member myself, I mean, this program is fantastic. You know, it's really helping to prepare our students for sort of the real world, so to speak, and some real sort of role play scenarios, and really trying to, you know, instill some of that business acumen that you, you know, you tend to see out there and in sort of the real world, so to speak. So I know I'm a big fan of this program and I would advocate for the rest of my colleagues to go along with that as well.
Any other comments? My only comment is I think a couple of these locations look to be maybe a little bit different. The breakdown of the programming and the trip planning and all that looks pretty consistent with what we've seen before. And again, I do think it's a great program, and it's always been a very successful trip. So I think any updates based on the new locations, I would welcome those. And I actually wish them luck so that they actually do attend some of these later trips and make it to that level. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the slate of items two, three, and four as presented in our packet for the overnight trips later during this current school year, 23, 24.
Okay. A second. So a motion by Mr. Russo, a second by Ms. B. Joni Smith to approve three trips. First trip is the State Career Development Conference in Boston, March 7th through March 9th. The second trip is Power Trip Conference in Austin, Texas, November 16th through November 19th, and then the third being, hopefully, Career Development Conference in Anaheim, California, April 26th through May 1st, as presented in our packet. Mr. Russo, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. B. Joni Smith?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So thank you very much for presenting this so early.
Thank you very much, yes. Okay, next in your new business agenda is our enrollment to date, and this is informational only, there's no vote required. You can see as of now on the first page, we have 3,227 students in grades preschool through post 12th grade. And if you remember last year, at this time, or on October 1st, that's when we post the official numbers with the state, but we had 3,201 students, you may remember this, and at the end of last school year, we ended with 3,249. So we're poised a little bit better than we were in October of last year, and it's a fluctuating number. But where we saw the most growth is, in this makes sense, is in grade one, even more than we, we had more grade one students than we had in kindergarten the year before. So that's a really nice growth area. We had a high grade three last year. It's up a little bit more this year and obviously leading to a high fourth grade. And then we had a bubble in sixth a little that went to seventh. It's not huge, but it all contributing to our slight growth. If you look at the second page, you can see our class sizes are still ideal at all grade levels. The reorganization of some staff down to the lower grade levels is really helpful because we saw the need in first grade. As I said, we got more students than expected and we needed to provide additional staff there. So our pre-K through grade one really does help to keep our district enrollment up and it, we just hope that bubble just continues to grow and move up through the grade levels, and I will keep you updated as that happens.
Any questions or comments on enrollment? Mr. Russo?
Yeah, just two things. One, one's a comment, actually. I'm actually really pleased to see the freshman number because, of course, a lot of rumors out there, you know, that our freshman class had 80 kids, 90 kids. It's double that.
It's low. It's low, you know.
It's lower, but out of the four, but it's comparable to the other grade bands at the high school.
Sure, yeah.
Two less than our current junior class. So and then my question is, is in terms of the current first grade class, where we have that bubble, next year, going to the center school, you're, you have a really an increase of roughly net 35 kids, and it looks like, it seemed like you're already over capacity from the sense of what the center school can accommodate currently at 750. So if we're going to have almost 800 kids there, how is that?
We're close to 800 now.
You are?
Yeah. And, you know, and we're good there, right? And we have some, some room to grow. Obviously, we'd be looking at some big spaces, having a gen ed class versus, you know, we do have some big classes that have some smaller groups. But we're, we're watching that. Jay and Rob are on top of that and will continue to. So let's, I, I mean, we hope we don't run way over
Right.
the capacity of that school anytime too soon because that would certainly have us looking at how we're going to do that. But, or, you know, our class sizes are low.
Yeah, I know, I see that.
I mean, we're, we wanted this, we wanted 25s our number, right? But we're seeing, you know, still the 19s and 20s and what have you across the board. So we'll have to look at that as we go.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes, I had a question, the same question that Mr. Russo had. I guess what I, when I looked at it, I saw that we have 16 first grade classes and 12 second grade classes, so that bubble's going to continue to grow throughout our schools as, as the center school ready. But I think you kind of answered that you guys are well aware and looking at it.
Right. And what we know is, let's pretend we had to then address classes on floors that aren't necessarily that whole grade level. So these are all the little details that'll come into discussion. Hopefully, we don't have to do that.
Mr. Parsons?
I'm just speaking with my teacher hat on. Like, these numbers are incredible.
Yeah.
I have all 30 kids in all of my classes. And just to kind of address what my peers are asking about, plenty of room to grow there, in my opinion. This is great.
Thank you. Thank you, because the committee's support, obviously, for keeping our class sizes low, that shows up in the budget that you approve. And as we continue to look at that data and reorganize where staff is needed, you know, we know we have a very low, low word enrollment here, and obviously, we're looking at that as well because as we see that bubble grow, the shift, you know, of staff does happen.
Yep.
Okay. Mrs. B. Joni Smith?
No questions at this time.
Okay. No, thank you. And this comes back again in October?
Well, when we have our numbers that we provide to Desi, we'll make sure you're aware of what those final numbers were, and then we'll watch them a couple of times throughout the school year.
Okay. And do you also, do you also have to provide high school class sizes or just up to grade?
High school class sizes are tricky because, and you may see class sizes of seven and then 29. It's about where things fall on a schedule, so we're always look, we do look at them and we look at maximums and are there room for a student then to take that same course? I, I mean, I can, we've had experience sharing it with the committee and we're happy to do that.
No.
But it is not the same, it's not that you disperse them evenly everywhere. It's, it's about when students are taking them and so, but we do look at them. That's what we did last spring, and we reduced some sections of the same course so that there weren't five in a section and 10, you know, now, okay, so that could be a 12. So it's, it's a lot, it's a lot of looking at the enrollment over the year.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. And moving on to some matters of interest for the school committee, does anybody have anything to add? Mr. Russo?
I'll maybe just comment on two things. One is, so I, you know, again, and I kind of already mentioned this in my wellness update, you know, we will, or I will work to bring forward in our next agenda, some of the information that I think was helpful and maybe to try and work with, you know, Deb Mugford on the Food Services, just about some of the data and just say, hey, you know, let's maybe think about how we would, you know, want to consider some of these things, so we'll at least try and get it on the agenda. And then secondly, I just would like to let my colleagues know that the MAS C, you know, just actually reached out to me today and they've appointed me to the baseball MIAA Subcommittee for the sport of baseball for, as our representative. So just wanted to pass that information along and I'll keep the committee informed as updates provide.
Great. Thank you for representing.
You're welcome.
Mr. Parsons, anything?
I have none.
Mrs. Anderson?
No.
Mrs. B. Joni Smith?
I did want to do, throw over a couple of things. One, this past Sunday was the Public Safety Night at here, at the high school. It was great. I'd like to commend Jenny Welch on all the hard work she does to put together these events. And with that one comes the next one, which is Safe Halloween that she runs as well. It's an incredible night. It's a great chance for families to come together from all across town. So Safe Halloween will be 10:29 from 1:00 to 3:00 here, similar format as previous years, and thank her for all the work that she's doing to pull all the different groups of people together who, who come in to support our families. Tomorrow is World Peace Day. It's been recognized since 1982. I learned that. That is new, so do something that gives back, I guess. And then I'm excited for our theater productions coming up, two big musicals, Frozen at The Win, and then, as Rania mentioned earlier, a high school musical here at this high school. So got a big season coming up that I'm looking forward to.
It does look like, Madam Chair. I just want to mention to remind people about our special town meeting that is held, not our school committee, but the town of Tuxbury has a special town meeting for all residents on October 3rd at 7:00 PM, and that's also held at Tuxbury High School in the gym. So hopefully, we'll see people there as well. And that's really it, just welcome back. I feel like I said it once already, it doesn't feel like September 20th. Some future school committee meeting dates, October 3rd, again, special town meeting, October 11th, November 15th, December 6th. And then for 2023, future subcommittee advisory committee dates, as we talked about, CPAC has a business meeting tomorrow evening, September 21st, wellness advisory on October 4th, and policy subcommittee is also tomorrow, September 21st. Any future addenda items that anybody would like to ask that we include?
I have just one thing, and maybe it's not the next one, or maybe it's a future, future, future one, the new IEP forms that are out there, like to hear a little bit about what our plan is here when it comes to that form, what we're doing, how we're going to rule that out to families and such. Again, it doesn't have to be the very next meeting.
Sure.
But I would love to hear, and I think there are some families who would be interested in knowing about that change as well, as important as the standards-based report cards are, changes to something that you've seen over and over and over again can be kind of stressful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
And can I just add something?
Yes.
I think last year, we talked about bringing in students with some things that they were doing in their classrooms, and I know, I mean, we're only 20 days in, so there's probably not a lot going on, but in the future, if there's things, maybe like the wax museum that the fourth graders do or certain things that they want to highlight in these meetings,